Okay. Real quick. Um, should go in order that I have on the attendance sheet. Um, Kang. Logue. Did I say that right? Saito. I'm, I'm sure he'll be on here shortly. Um, Smith Kalhane. Agalera.
Here. Here.
Arnold. Gardner.
Hi, I just joined the call.
Awesome, thank you. Murakami.
Hi, I'm here.
DeMarco.
Present.
Okay, and. Oh. Alright, you have quorum with. Eight.
So first order of business is filling and filling of vacancies. We have one vacancy in sub district three, which is generally west kind of. Uh, are there any volunteers online or in person like to fill this vacancy? Right, seeing no hands. We will defer this.
Hi, sorry, on the Zoom, I'm not picking up Brian's um, audio.
How's this? That's, that's.
Not yet.
Yep. Other folks hearing? That's check, check. Okay, that's, that's. One, two, three.
I'm barely picking up anything.
One, two, three, check, check.
This is Jason, I barely hear you as well.
Check the audio and then one second.
I could hear Jason.
That means it's our side, not your side.
Mic check, test one, two, can you hear us now?
Better.
You hear me? Better? Just, okay. Okay, so if anybody can hear us, let us know.
Um, it's like, meh, it's like sixty-five percent of what I want it to be.
Okay, let me. Sixty-five?
Can you hear me?
Hmm. I don't think that one's working, that you're.
Not true.
How's that, that? Testing? Thank you. Testing, check, check. Like, testing, testing.
Ah, they all say the same.
Oh, I'm trying to slide it out maybe?
As far as, yeah, that's maxed out. Mic check, one, two, testing, one, two.
I hear him great.
Testing, testing.
Why do you have a mic in front of me?
Hear that him great.
Okay.
Board members cannot hear.
I can not, okay, hang on. You gotta type everything to the speaker.
Sorry.
Mic check, one, two.
Check, check, testing, testing.
Eh.
Check. How's that?
It, it, I mean, you guys just sound like you're in the background. I don't, I don't hear, except for our assistant. I could hear our assistant.
That's very interesting.
Mic check, one, two, testing, one, two.
That's great.
I think it's because of trying to slide. Trying to slide the volume down.
Hmm.
I hear the assistant great.
Mic check, one, two, testing, one, two.
Yes, great. So someone else in the chat just wrote, that one guy is loud and clear. Everyone else, I won't understand what they're saying once they start really talking.
Testing, one, two, mic check, one, two.
Yes, yes.
Testing, one, two, three. Huh? I think we know.
Uh, I hear someone in the background saying, can you hear me?
On my.
That's really annoying.
Someone call me annoying?
No, not you, no, not you.
Just joking.
Jesus, I'm so sorry.
Can you hear us? Can you hear me? Testing, one, two, three.
Hmm, not from the Zoom. I hear faintly in the background saying, can you hear us in a female voice?
I'll try.
That's check, check, one, two, three.
Still, I can't understand.
You might have to do it Donahue style.
Donahue style is lovely.
I'm wondering. They're picking up something like a book I do, some things. Yeah, testing, testing.
Okay, should I do one more test? You go ahead and.
Okay. Few more settings for the microphone. Let's see what prices on that.
Thank you guys online for being so patient. We appreciate you heavily. Thank you so much. Now try it here.
What? No.
It's volumes here. Check, check, checks on, very, very loud, but I'm on the right microphone.
Or it's also because that camera might.
Try one more time, try one more time, cheer.
Testing, check, check. Six.
Come on, I'm trying to switch the mic.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Again, that's, that's a long. Okay. What's? Check, check, one, two. Okay, now it can barely hear me, so let's, let's see if that'll. Get better.
Yeah, that was great. The assistant I heard.
Testing, you're it? What's? Testing?
Meh.
Meh, that's lovely. That's gracious.
Just a little.
Dude.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, you, you may have to, and I, I could just move the camera this way. To face you like that.
Okay, so honestly. You may want to turn the speaker volume down because it's.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm definitely. So, hey. Alright.
That's just for existence.
Uh, so I might have to go in.
Yes, so.
It's very annoying. Not you online, I'm not calling you guys annoying. Okay.
Alright. Okay, we're gonna try it this way, how's that?
Awesome.
Loud and clear.
Alright, well, folks, you're gonna have to maybe come up. Alright, so. Just so that we're clear on the record, so filling of vacancies, let me do that one more time. Filling of vacancies, we have one vacancy in sub district three. Uh, any volunteers to fill this vacancy online or in person? Alright, seeing no hands, we'll defer that to the next meeting. Uh, city and state monthly reports. First off is the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have the Honolulu Fire Department online?
Does that you have HPD? Yeah, does HPD?
Okay, just HPD? Okay, so we'll defer the Honolulu Fire Department, then we'll go to the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. Uh, for the stats from October, motor vehicle thefts are seventeen. Burglary, we had ten reported. Thirty-three thefts and nine UEMVs. Uh, total calls for service for the month was six thousand three hundred and eighty. And um, the tips for the month will be uh, security tips for businesses. And some of the tips will be alarms are good deterrents and are recommended for all businesses. Change alarm codes whenever employee leaves the company. Make, make sure your property is well lit. Areas that benefit most from outdoor lighting are those that are most vulnerable, such as entryways, back alleyways and windows. Light should be positioned as high as possible to prevent tampering. And motion detectors and floodlights are recommended. Uh, secure all windows and doors. All business should have tamper-proof pick-resistant door locks. Keep areas surrounding doors and windows un- unobstructed and well lit. And then I'll empty your case registers and leave them open at closing time. Remove the temptation of a full cash register and help you keep your registers from being dis- destroyed by showing in plain sight there is nothing of value in- inside. And another tip is um, don't use the lock boxes to keep keys to get into the business. Um, there have been sprees where the thieves were targeting the, the lock boxes for the keys. And um, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? So um, Lieutenant and I have a couple of questions, or actually comments brought up by a couple of residents. The first is uh, some concerns about the intersection of Eighteenth and Pohua. Uh, this resident just mentioned that cars on Pohua heading towards Kahala Mall are not stopping at the stop sign. It's a four-way stop sign, so they just mentioned that, I guess there's a concern about that there. They've observed a number of cars not stopping at the intersection.
Okay.
Um, and the second concern has to do with graffiti under the Tenth Avenue overpass, which was apparently recently painted over, so apparently that issue has been at least temporarily resolved. As well as the um, the underpass near Market City, a lot of graffiti there. So I realize, I realize graffiti is tough, I mean, you're gonna have to see them doing it, but um, just to bring those issues to your attention.
Right, so I know the city has a graffiti hotline where citizens can report graffiti and um, it, when that, when it gets reported to the hotline, it gets taken care of pretty quickly. Um, they come over and paint over it pretty quick, so that, that's one way to, you know, to alleviate the eyesore from the graffiti. And as far as Eighteenth Pohua, I'll, I'll let the officers on my watch know to make checks over there. I know there's a school nearby there also.
Right, yeah. Terrific, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Problem.
Okay, any other questions? Police Department? Okay, if not, thank you very much Lieutenant, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the Board of Water Supply, Lorna. So I think you're on mute, Lorna.
I'm on mute, I'm sorry, I, you figure everybody gets this right, and I learn. Anyways, okay, can you hear me now? You, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay, great. Um, so I have no main breaks to report for the last month. The only announcement I have this month is about the twenty twenty-four poster and poetry contest. So the Border Water Supply is launching its twenty twenty-four poster and poetry contest, and it's open for kindergarten to sixth graders, as well as a poetry contest being open to the seventh to twelfth graders. This year, the theme is our water, our home, and the deadline for this is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And if you want more information, go to our website at www dot borderwatersupply dot com forward slash WCW contest. That is the only announcement I have for tonight. Anybody have any questions?
Alright, any questions for the Border Water Supply? Online or in person? Alright, seeing none, thank you very much, Lorna, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public input. Uh, your opportunity to provide public inputs to the board. Uh, is there any public input from the community, online or in person? Okay, I do understand that um, Ryan Kimora from the Department of Transportation, is he here? Ryan?
I'm here.
I know you have some, yeah, a couple of updates on some of the community issues. Or.
Uh, yes.
Transportation issues, go ahead.
Oh, so there's some updates on some of the projects that addresses this, the H one guardway and shoulder, Kapilani interchange to Inacoa Avenue Phase Two, that was gonna extend the guard rail along the White Light Avenue off-ramp to better protect the shared use paths coming from under divided up. That has been revised advertising date from February now to September due to some environmental reassessments. I guess the scope kind of changed some of the criteria, so they have to go through the environmental assessment again. So it's gonna take a little longer, but now we are at a September twenty twenty-four advertised date. And the other project that um, to address the Coco Head approach of Harding to create three distinct lanes of right turn, left, two and left turn. That traffic signal monetization of the eastbound H one off-ramp by Coco Head Avenue down is still on schedule to advertise in March twenty twenty-four. And that's all the updates I have. Any other questions? I'm here to take that too.
Go ahead, one more time.
Answer, ask your question, one.
Are you with uh, state highways or the city, like uh, city roads and stuff?
Um, I'm with state highways, the DOT state.
So there's a, there's a city one too, right? Like uh, like uh, let's say Harding Avenue. Is that your business, the Harding Avenue?
Uh, Harding and Coco Head, because Coco Head is the state by the freeway.
But Harding Avenue running from say uh, Pabahula to Auto Way to Sixteen Avenue, is that yours?
Um, no, that's, that's under the city.
Yeah, okay, that's why I wanna know, because I had a question for the city guy.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you very much, Brian, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public input at this time? Alright, seeing none? Alright, let's move on. So we'll move on to presentations. Verizon Telecommunications Installation at Kapilani Community College. Is Steven Sung or his representative online?
Sorry, I'm Steve Sung, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, thanks Steve.
No, thank you. So, good evening, Chairperson Kang, Commissioners and the public. My name is Steve Sung with Verizon Wireless. Thanks again for allowing me um, uh, to make this presentation tonight for this project, the proposed Verizon small cell project at KCC. Um, the reason for this project is this, the cell coverage at KCC campus, it's um, really slim and none. And especially in building coverage. Oh, by, by the way, I'm sorry, I have uh, Justin Murata and Jamison Realm and with KCC and Lance Yamamoto, I believe Lance with uh, uh, the university system, and also have Noah Gradzen. Uh, he is a Verizon uh, real estate manager. And they are attending this neighborhood board meeting, just let the board, uh, just let the commissioner know. Uh, so going back to the KCC project, um, again, the KCC campus is lack of cell coverage. If you, if you go to the classroom, in-building coverage is basically really non-existent. Um, you get one bar if that. Um, so the importance for this project is we're trying to cover only the campus. Uh, we have identify, in fact, let me share this, hold on one second. Well, we basically are going to mount these small cell antennas uh, at, on five buildings within KCC campus. And the, the purpose of the going on this five building is strategically, they're gonna basically provide in-building point to, the antennas will be pointing to the other buildings where we can provide in-building coverage for all the buildings within the campus. And also, uh, there are few others. Uh, small cell antennas will be pointed at the parking area. So at night, you know, you have your students and your uh, professors, they, you know, they, they, they get all late, and sometimes their car breaks down, or whatever the case may be. Um, they might need, you know, cell coverage and call for help or whatever. So um, we, we basically targeted that, so we wanna basically provide coverage for the entire KCC campus. Um, none of the, you know, the cell coverage is going to really go beyond uh, or very, very minimal. We're talking about maybe hundred feet if that, um, over the campus. Everything, the coverage basically I mainly is to cover the KCC campus only. So um, let me share my screen. I wanna go over just the design um, of what we're, what we're proposing at KCC, so. Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So just letting you know, this particular, all the design for these five buildings, um, we are still pending uh, KCC's approval. But um, in general, you know, we have gone through this extensively with KCC folks and uh, everything's looking good right now, but we still need their final approval to move forward. But anyway, uh, going to this uh, presentation, we have, we're gonna cover basically uh, five buildings, uh, the Kalia. I'm sorry, Kalia, Copico, Olono, I'm sorry, O- O- Ollona, Ohia, and Eliahi buildings. We did the five buildings that we're gonna have our small cell antennas on the roof and our equipment cabinet on the roof. So the design is, uh, let's go to Kalia Building first. The idea is we wanna make it as, you know, as stealth as possible to make it, you know, uh, not, well, make it aesthetically sound as much as possible. So if you look at this photo simulation that we have for Kalia Building, this is basically the existing roof right now. So you have this roof structure that you, that you're looking at by arrow, you have the uh, the roof structure, the existing enclosure that's on the roof. So we have two antennas right here basically, and they're, they're gonna be installed within an FRP enclosure, that mirror what is existing enclosure, and we'll cut, we'll make the color to match the existing color. So it'll blend in nicely from, you know, from ground looking up, you, you really don't, don't see uh, the difference, uh, other than you have the same, you know, symmetrical structure that's on the roof. So let's go to um, the next page. Uh, this is another view. So, so, I'm sorry, so in this case for Kalia, you have three, we have three, we have three antennas. One, two, and three. So the, the, the view earlier, uh, the, the, the one slide before that, you can see the two antennas. This is the, for the third, so you can see that uh, we have the enclosure here with the antenna inside. Um, and it matches uh, what is existing, the enclosure that's on the roof. So this is another view, uh, looking from ground up. You can't, you basically, again, uh, in this case, you can't even see the uh, uh, the enclosure on the roof, but um, if you get closer, you can basically see what's, what's up there. Now, this is basically the uh, cabinet that we're gonna have on the roof at Kalia Building. Um, being that we're, is behind the enclosure, you can't really see from all views, so we're, we're not going to uh, enclose it. Um, but you know, again, it's, it's on the roof, uh, it supports the antennas, uh, and uh, you can't really see it from, from ground up, so. Now we go to the, the Copico Building. Um, the Copico Building will have uh, basically two, two antennas, so. You can see it right here. So being that the, the area is kind of somewhat compact, so instead of doing two enclosures, it's a smaller area. So we basically did a single enclosure to cover both antennas and also the equipment cabinet. So in this case, you have an existing enclosure right here, and we're basically gonna put at the exactly similar uh, enclosure design, and the antennas and the cabinet will be within the enclosure right here. So. If you look at the cabinet over the proposed enclosure, and you can't really, and you know, you can't see it from, from ground up, so we got that hidden very well. Uh, next building is the Olono, the Olona Building, excuse me. And this one only have one, one and one antenna, and this one basically is to cover the parking area, again, to make sure that, you know, uh, late at night that if somebody has the car, you know, breaking down, they can call for help, or you know, if they feel they're not safe, they wanna call someone, they can, um, the coverage will be there. So this is before, and this is what, what we're proposing to add there. Again, if you look at the existing enclosure that's on the roof, it's, it matches very well. And you can't really, you know, nobody can see what's in there, obviously. So this is the um, uh, the equipment cabinet that's gonna be on the roof, and again, being that is over the enclosure, you can't see it from both sides, so um, we don't, we're not gonna enclose that. And then the next building is Ohia. Oh, here, we have four antennas, uh, four enclosures, separate enclosures. As you can see here, this is the existing enclosure. We have one sector right here, this is the enclosure for that sector antenna. And then, there's another view, and you have another sector right here. And this is the existing equipment enclosure on, on the roof, and this is the proposed. Again, you have the equipment cabinet on the roof and over platform. Um, it's behind the enclo- the existing enclosure, so you can't, you can't see that, you can't see it. And then we have the Eliahi Building. And you have uh, two, two nodes, two antennas, two sectors. So you have one here. This is the existing dish antenna that's on the roof. So you have the proposed enclosure, and then, and then turn inside, and then you have the other. Yeah, you have the other enclosure and the existing uh, dish antenna that's on the roof. And the same thing, again, this is behind, sorry, go ahead. Somebody had a question? Okay, so yeah, again. Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, no questions, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So again, the platform and the equipment cabinet next to the existing dish antenna and the solar panels. So the idea is, you know, we want to make it, we want to, we want to cover, you know, the entire campus. But we want to make sure that the design that we have, you know, strategically, it, it will cover the from, from the RF engineering design, you know, that it's going to work, is gonna cover the entire campus. And at the same time, we're basically making it stealthy and matches what is existing on the roof. Just to make it aesthetically more, you know, aesthetically pleasing. And the, the whole idea is to make sure that, you know, the in-building coverage is there. You know, as you know, there, there are natural disasters now, you know, you have other, you know, university campuses where, you know, they have, and God forbid it ever happen here, you know, shootings. You, if, if somebody, if something like that happens, right? Somebody wants to make a phone call, they can't. They have to basically go outside of the, go outside of the classroom. And at that, you still really don't have coverage. And that goes for all the carriers, not just Verizon. So Verizon just want to be proactive and have their coverage, you know, at KCC, just for KCC. And so, again, you know, communication is, is, infrastructure is important. We don't, we don't think about it until we, we need it. And, you know, when there's natural disaster again, and, 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 you know, health emergencies and whatnot, you, you want, you want that cell coverage. You want to be able to make contact someone for help if you, if you do need it. So that's the whole idea that, you know, that whole reason why we're working with KCC on this. And so in this case, we have to, once we have the approval to move forward, we will basically go for permits. And although this is permitted use, so really a conditional use permit is not required, but a special management area permit and a special district permit is required. And, and, and a waiver, I believe. And so, you know, we just want to, you know, be in, in, in consulting with KCC that we want to notify the, you know, Kamaki Neighborhood Board, since we're under there, and, you know, just basically notify the board that this project is on its way. And hopefully, you know, people still have any problem with that.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, any questions from the board members? Nate, Jason, go ahead. Jason, you there? No? Okay, we will come back to Jason. Jason, do you have a question? Yeah, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Hi, Jason.
Yes, have a question. Go ahead. Oh, great. Uh, yeah, it wasn't clear to me. Are these stations just for Verizon coverage or is Verizon deploying these for the benefit of all carriers on the campus?
No, unfortunately, this is for Verizon only. There's, if, if other carriers, you know, wants to follow the lead and do the same, they would approach KCC. You know, they would, they would install their, their antennas on the roof.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation, Steven. I wanted to ask, what's the range capacity or what's, sorry, what's the range of each antenna? Like, what, do they overlap each other on campus so that there's coverage or how does that work?
They won't overlap. Again, they're strategically, you know, from RF engineers to design where they're covering from one, one building, one roof, covering the other in-building for the, you know, basically they will, they will point the antenna or they have antennas covering the, let's say, the building across or next to. And then also the parking lot. So they won't overlap, but rather they are, this is what we call a small cell technology. So it's not like a macro site. We have one at University of Hawaii. And so, you know, it's on, it's a full macro site where they have 12 antennas on the roof. And they're basically, you know, it's to cover maybe quarter miles. In this case, the small cell technology, they're very, the output is very, very minimal. So it's, again, strategically, basically to short distance. But again, to be able to penetrate in-building coverage to provide that, you know, provide the the coverage that's needed. When you do in-building coverage, when you try to penetrate inside building, you already lose a lot of your strength. And so, you know, the way this, again, being placed and the way it's designed is to make sure that the in-building coverage will be there for all the buildings and the parking lot. Hello, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, representative.
Following up on Jason's question, would your equipment or your antennas be shared with another telephone company if it's technically possible?
Yeah, it's not possible. So cellphone carriers run on different radio frequency bandwidth. They basically, each cellphone carriers have to, you know, purchase the bandwidth through FCC. And it, it costs, it's, you know, it's millions. And they, they do not share, you know, they don't, they do not share their, their, their signals.
All right.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
All right, Steve, go ahead.
Nope. So hopefully, you know, people that do have other cell, cell coverage, if another carrier don't come along, you know, they would want to have better service and they would change the service to Verizon.
Okay, any other question, online or in person? Anyone? Okay, if not, uh, thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you.
We're, we're gonna drop off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're gonna move on to our next item, which is speeding issues on 16th Avenue is Lucas Shield.
Hey, everybody.
Yes, we can.
All right. Thanks for having me today. My name is Lucas Shield. I'm a resident of Kamaki. I know most of you are probably already aware of speeding issues on 16th. And I've spoken about them before and hoping to add to that conversation. Last several years, I've been working with Amanda Zapata, the constituent services director for the Office of Counsel, Tommy Waters. Several different ways to help reduce speeding or traffic dangers on 16th between Wiley Avenue going Malka towards Mount Me Park. Do I, can I share my screen? Is that okay?
Yes, yes, you may.
All right, I'll share. I've got a little. Think, okay. Let me know when you see it.
Yes, we see it.
Okay. So this is showing, you know, Wiley Avenue down here in the bottom up to Mount Me Park, this long straightaway. There's a persistent speeding issue going in both directions. People tend to accelerate to go up the hill, up Wilhelmina Rise or, or coming down even off the hill, they start to gain speed. And often, you know, anywhere to 50 plus miles an hour at times, especially in the evening. We started at first by trying to get some slowdown or caution, kids playing signs. And DTS did not approve those or any of their traffic control measures. But we did get a work order issued to re-strike the faded center line, stop bars and crosswalks in the area. So we're happy that, hopefully that'll come up. That was issued in, I think, September 2022. We're hoping that will be accomplished soon. There's, they did conduct a speed survey. A speed survey confirmed that there's speeding occurring in both directions there. And they did request the assistance of HPD to monitor. We're thankful for that. They placed a speed feedback trailer on 16th that worked really, really well. Unfortunately, that trailer is only temporary. I'm sure you've all seen it before. As you're driving, they flash your speed at you, and then suddenly you realize you're speeding. I, I do have both the, the, the pleasure and, and, and also the pain of working from home. And so I, I, my office actually pieces 16, so I see a lot of the speeding and witness them when your misses and accidents in that area. So today, I just want to talk about that speaking in my proposed solution are, you know, speed tables or speed humps. And we've got three different areas here. The most persistent area is the Five Corners area next to Mount Me Park. That's where Claudine, Anuhea and 16th Avenue all meet. And then there's Noial Street Crossing right here as well, and then Kaonu Street Crossing. That's, those are the proposed ones. I thought around about would be another solution as well. I just put that on here. Not quite sure how these meetings go, but wanted to throw it out for another solution. So for those of you that don't know what a speed table is, here are two examples. Both of these are, have been employed in Hawaii. I think one's Kaneohe and the other one is out on the west side. But their speed tables or raised crosswalk or a speed hump are asphalt or rubber mounds that cover the full width of roadway. There's essentially speed humps have been modified, this flat top. And that reduces disruption of the vehicle. So the vehicle can pass over it without, you know, coming to a near stop as you would like a speed bump. So why speed tables work, they're really ideal in residential areas where speed limits around 25 because you can still go 25 miles an hour over. You just can't go much more. They keep traffic flowing, but at a safer pace. They're better than speed bumps because it's a smoother experience for the drivers. They reduce, they reduce the cost for police presence and speed enforcement, especially in the overnight hours where speed is a real acute. And they're really all return solution for safety. In this particular area here, so this is a proposed speed table A. There's a crosswalk right there. Mount Me Park, this park is in the upper right corner. And then, of course, this is that kind of five corners intersection that's a little bit wider. And people tend to use Anuhea as like an off ramp. They don't stop the stop sign. They merge right onto 16th pretty quick. And people are flying down 16th. And this, there's many people that use this park, children playing games in there. There's weekly dog training there, about 30, 40 dogs show up. There's a bus stop on 16th right here. Sidewalks are particularly close to the road, as you can see from some of these pictures, about 18 inches away. So this is the first location of a proposed speed table. Here's it from another angle. Mount Me Park is right behind me here, or right behind the speed table. How the crosswalk is faded. And then this is it from the, up at the top of 16th. There's right, a water reservoir right to my right. But you can see it's kind of a long, perfect straight way to really gain speed on this downhill section. Second proposed speed table here. This is first photos on 16th, looking towards Wiley. And right here, there's actually not a crosswalk. And they could probably even fix these curves to be ADA compliant. This one's on 16th looking Malka, back up the road. And then location C, proposed speed table here is morally first photos looking towards Wiley. The second photo is looking Malka. There is no crosswalk existing there right now. So I'm sure the paint, the paint markings would be helpful there. Now, again, I think speeding is a problem. It's been recognized. It's a problem on 16th. I hope the board agrees that, you know, it's, it's a problem. And they also see that the speed tables are resolution and is willing to adopt a resolution in support of speed tables or other traffic calming measures for this section of 16th. Again, thank you so much for the time tonight and letting me present. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much, Lucas. Any questions for Lucas from the board? Okay, Becky, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I didn't quite get it. Lucas, were you procured by the city and county to design this or are you a concerned member of the community?
Yeah, yeah, good question. No, I'm just a concerned member of the community. I do, I do live on 16th, yeah, right in nearby that Five Corners. So I experience it daily. I work as well, yeah.
Okay, um, I mean, that's great. I mean, I was, I mean, I say that in a way disappointed because I thought, oh my gosh, they're actually doing something. But you are probably the one community member that has gone further than any other in describing the problem and proposing a solution. I feel like we've talked about this maybe three or four times since I've been on the neighborhood board about how fast. I, I remember talking to somebody whose dog was hit by a car. He was like walking a little bit too slow behind him when they were trying to cross. So I think that it's, I like the idea of a table, you know, I don't know what the city would want to do. But I wonder even, I don't know if our neighborhood board assistant knows, but I feel like we might have even passed a resolution at some point. So, um, yeah, that, that's all. And then I, my hope was that you were with the city, county. And one thing, our former chair who passed away, but one of the things that she had hoped to see was maybe rainbow crosswalks that you see in a lot of cities. In fact, I was just in Boulder, Colorado, and they had a rainbow crosswalk there. And it was really, you know, for me, it's like Hawaii should be the one that does rainbow crosswalks, if anybody. So if you did, if you were working with the city, I say, hey, can you make, paint a rainbow on it too? But maybe when you bring your plans and ideas further up the chain, maybe you can paint it with a rainbow. But I, I think if Tommy's staff is here, hopefully he's taking notes too. That's all.
Right. Any other questions? One more line? Kelsey, go ahead.
Hi, Lucas. Thanks for that presentation. Can you just repeat or clarify, did the city do a traffic study and did the city was the conclusion that no speed mitigation measure needed?
The, so DTS did not approve the slowdown or caution kids playing signs or any other additional traffic control measures at that time. I do have the specifics in an email. Basically, they said, we don't use those type of signs anymore. We, we do follow standardized signage found in the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which is the national standard for the Federal Highway Commission, dot, 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 you know. So they're not, and they're no longer supported by the MUTDC, so they won't be installed at that time. But they did, you know, because we said, well, hey, there's not, you can't even see the crosswalk there and people are crossing all the time. They said, well, let, we'll get a, issue a work order then to get those painted. That was about a year ago. So we're hoping sooner or later it happens. And they, then they did send out the speed feedback trip. It was flashing lights, you know, and that was there for about a week. And that, that was amazing, actually. It really slowed people down. Problem is, once it leaves, the speeding starts again. And of course, you know, late at night too, it happened. So then we went back to Amanda. What I should have done, started with the speed tables, actually, but I forget the exact name, but they, oh, outstanding RSIRs with DTS on the speed hump and tables. So they do have an RISR with DTS on the speed hump tables. This is from Amanda. And Tommy Waters has CC'd on this email. Put a date on it. This is from July 5th, 2023. So that was the last we heard from Amanda.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if there's obviously a problem and it's been well documented for years. Why hasn't DTS moved forward with any sort of speed prevention measures is my question, not for you, Lucas, but.
Yeah, no, it's a good one. And they've deployed police a few times and even recommended, if you call the police and people are speeding. However, you know, once a car goes by, it doesn't do much. And you hate to waste officer resources on speeding with something. Speed tables cost like $5,000. It's a hump of asphalt, you know, it's, it's not a real difficult thing to employ. And, you know, the state has installed them in Kaneohe and Kailua. They did, they've done it in Kihei, they've done on the Big Island. I've seen them all over. So they're becoming more popular and they're not as intrusive as speed bumps. I heard on the radio today, though, that something for the council, they're trying to remove the need for traffic studies to lower residential area speed limits. Problem with that is speed limits already don't work, right? Like, even if you change it from 25 to 15 miles an hour, people still speed. The guy at 10 o'clock at night racing home is like, you're not gonna suddenly slow down to 15 because now it says 15 instead of 25. Speed humps really enforce that. That's my hope anyways. And sorry, didn't have my, I didn't have my, oh, Mark Wong, okay. Wow, that's one speed, uh, speed tables, 120,000. That's amazing. I'll have to do a little more research. I, I, I work in construction. I contacted a couple of different civil contractors and asked them what it was, would cost. I guess maybe there's some HDOT conditions that make it 10 orders of magnitude higher. I'm kind of surprised at that number, but they would know. They've installed them. They would know they've installed them already, like I said, in Kaneohe, Kailua, on the Poly. Yeah, I'll have to look more into that first, but I I'm still advocating for one because it would save lives and and police resources on Sixteenth Avenue.
All right. All right. Any further questions? We're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Lucas. Appreciate it. If you do have time, if you can stay online and, you know. We can probably ask for some follow-up from. Councilmember Waters' office as well as the city's representative, Mark Wong. And try to try to see if we get. Some updates on that, so.
That would be great. What does it take to adopt a resolution or what do I need to do to follow up?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you have a suggested resolution. You know, you can go ahead and and email that to me. I'd be glad to. To bring it and put it on the board for an agenda item, you know, upcoming meeting. So, yeah, if you do have a draft, you know, feel free to feel free to give that to me.
Okay, and sorry, this is my first time. So what did I do today that would be different from what I'd do next time? Like, I just have to write up. Is there a specific format for a letter? Like, is the speed table? Something more detailed than the PDF I presented, I guess?
No, I I don't think so. You know, I I don't think you need to provide anything more detailed at this point. But what would be helpful if if you do have a suggestion for a resolution, you know, be glad to consider a draft. For a resolution and I see Becky as her. And Becky, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, you know, to follow up and and support that suggestion. That maybe when you go to, if you go to the Neighborhood. Commission Office and you poke around with the different minutes and agendas, there might be somewhere. A reso from a neighborhood board. That would be a good template for you to follow. And I would just like try to keep it pretty. Short one page and, you know, there's like a drafting conventions where they start it with like whereas. And then some fact, whereas another fact, but you sort of build it up. So you're making a case for. Be it resolved that this board wants this action to happen. So that's sort of like the formula. But I I think you'll probably save yourself a lot of time if you find a good. Some of the resos are very poorly drafted. Some of them are amazing. So poke around and find one that you feel comfortable with. That maybe reflects your voice and then copy that, I'd suggest.
Great, great recommendations. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Lucas. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming on. Thanks for your present theme. Appreciate it. All right, so moving on, we will move on to an update. On my nature park fire mitigation discussions. And I believe Mr. Lau is here. You know, if you don't mind coming closer, unfortunately, the the only light that used to be working is with the camera, so. If you don't mind coming up close, that'd be great.
Okay, yes, wildfire mitigation. We're specifically talking about the area that's a preservation area. Right up the street. Along above Sixteenth, above the the nature park. I, a couple of months ago, was in my alarm and anxiety came to this body. And was given time to make a presentation. And at that time, I was thinking mostly about. Chain fires on Maui, where I've come from. And that as as I grew up, I was not aware of any structures being damaged by the cane fires or that people were being harmed. So I felt that there was a way to do this. Mitigation through to starting fires. Then the chair said. He had referred it forward to some people in the city and I'm here now. To give you an update on what has happened, at least as far as my involvement in the two months. So I'm going to do it by name dropping. First name I'm going to drop is Lori Amada. Lori Amada is now focusing upon envision Kai Moki. And she said to me. She was encouraged by the approach I made to her. And she said, you know, I think it'd be a good time for us to adopt the park. Maumai Park. And as you guys know, if you've been there, it needs adoption. And all around that park, there's wild grass that's dry. So if it were to be adopted and if if it were to be. Improved, that would also help to take care of fire hazard that it would contribute to in that area. Next, the next name I'm going to drop is Dan Denell. Dan Denell has been before this group to talk about trees in Kai Moki. When I spoke to him about it, asking for names of volunteers who might help with this. He offered maybe a half a dozen. His focus would be on canopy or tree restoration. Let's suppose that we took the wild grasses away from the margin. By about ten fifteen yards or whatever it is, that would be bear land. That would be an opportunity to introduce. Native plants that were more more fire resistant. So he's thinking thinking of it that way. He's all in. As far as that portion is concerned. So you can see I'm sketching a situation where there are different people who may be. On come on board for their own passions. I think that together, because A, if I were to ask you folks individually. Could you be passionate about a wildfire in that location in Kai Moki? I think we all would, just be a matter of directing your efforts towards something that was productive. The next thing I'll say is Mauna Lanikai Association. It's an association that the gate to which is right across the street from where I live. So I approached a couple of the residents. I said, how about giving me some time in an association meeting? I can present this issue to them and see how they feel about it. And it occurs to me to say. You're looking for volunteers. Volunteers will only give you the amount of time they're willing to give. And no more. But among the members of this association, there may be people, especially those that live closest to this wildfire hazard. Who might be willing to participate with their own, getting their own hands dirty. Might be willing to. I wanted an opportunity to present that there are other people interested in this issue. Who who aren't living in properties that border the place. I happen to be one street over. But look, guys. That's nothing these days. One street can be hopped over just like that. And we have examples now that haven't happened. So and my hope is that Mauna Lanikai will come on board with. And advocate it to its residents and there will be volunteers that will be helpful there. So I was told by the city about the Hawaii Wildfire Management Association, which has headquarters in Waimea. Called them several times. Looked at the map of the state of Hawaii and all of the areas where there's wildfire danger. And I can understand why they have not called me back. Got plenty to do, especially on the big island. If you look at a map that is on their website, you will see from about Iaya to Hawaii Kai. There's no wildfire association. None of our residential areas. Are covered by organizations that look at this as a hazard. But as we know, it doesn't matter where we live. You could live in Mielani a mile away and still be in danger. So I did write an email to Roberta Mayer. And I asked her for reference because she knows about the Camilo Louis. Mariners, Mariners, I want to say Jits, but that's wrong. Mariners Cove. Organization that has been in place for five years. They're going. Maybe I can get some hints from them on how to get started. Adam Do, I need to talk about him. He's been very responsive. With giving information about all that's going on. People in. The associations themselves and DPR resources. Won't name her. I won't name drop her, but there happens to be in this audience tonight. A former director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm not naming her because I wasn't given permission. But she is a resource for how to get around the DPR thing. Bottom line. There is a plan afoot. Between DPR and the Fire Department. If we let the DPR and the Fire Department go about it in their own business and their own time. We might have a wildfire before the plan is put together. So I am willing to join a group of people from the community as resources on that planning group. And put my own time in it from my association with that planning group, urge them on faster. And be able to get updates to all these people that I had mentioned. And there will be more, including Jackson. He called me, you know, the guy checking on me. About an hour before this meeting, he calls me up. He wants to find out whether or not I'm going to be there and what am I going to say. I didn't tell him about name dropping, but I'll drop his name too, because he is interested. In in all of this. Any questions?
Questions?
I think I think they were able to hear his comments. So as long as you speak a little loud, they'll be fine. Okay, so. In terms of volunteers, I belong to two organizations that are pretty heavy into volunteering. I was looking for work. One of them is Team Rubicon. It's veterans. Different military branches. They do community service. They give you fire mitigation and EVA. So if you want, I can give you a contact with them.
Yes.
And, you know, they help in like Maui with the wildfire, cleaning cleaning up the properties and things. And then the Lions Club. We have the Coco Head Lions Club here in this area. And then other Lions Clubs out there. And again, they're always looking for volunteer work. And then they always bring the Leo Lions, which are the, you know, the teenage. Version of the Lions Club. So I think there's a. And I was looking at the size of the part there. I think you could get a a good number of people. And the benefit with Team Rubicon is they bring all their own supplies. They have guys who do chainsaws. They'll cut things down, they'll. So I I can help you connect with them if you would like that.
I would like that, of course. It's up to me to approach them and to see within their resources. Whether or not they're able to help. I made reference to the Hawaii Wildfire Management Association. They must be up to here. In 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 different organizations and communities that are calling them for advice. All I was able to get from Adam. Was a page on their website. They haven't called me back yet. It's okay. It's okay. Anyway, but but the the point is, if you guys know of resource, I'm willing to. Thank you, James.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks so much for your presentation. I would suggest also eight oh eight cleanups. It's the chair, her, his name is Kimiona Kanae. He's a Waimanalo Chair. And he does a nonprofit of cleaning up different locations that he actually works on a volunteer basis. And he brings a lot of volunteers to clean up locations. So for instance, he actually did the hail area up. Behind. Behind the firehouse right up here on Coco Head. So he's one resource that he has many projects. And he does it pretty much all over on Waukele. He's a great resource for maybe times that he either can schedule or. His his group can schedule or he can find somebody in his community that can help with volunteering for that. The other thing too is that we do have funds, the thousand dollars. I believe we still have the thousand dollars. Do we still have that?
Yeah, I believe so.
We can, as our our neighborhood board has funds. That maybe we can help volunteer for you that we can do for outreach as well. So we have. A lot of money that we can we can help with maybe us doing outreach to help volunteer for for your. For your costs as well, so.
Okay. Look at me, guys. I'm not going to be around that much longer. And wildfires are gonna, as a threat, are gonna continue. I have the energy and the passion and the interest to be involved in this study. But this will need sustained effort and all of the people that have been mentioned. But I will say one other thing that started this all. And that is the people who live on Iwi Way and Sixteenth Avenue. That are closest to this fire hazard. If we could get them to go outside their property line. Clear up a little bit. In other words, get their hands dirty. They have. A stake. And they might come out and their neighbor might not. But the neighbor might be inspired, I will use that word, to come out and help out and. And they together can clear both of their properties. You understand what I'm getting at there? The effort will not be sustained forever by folks of good heart who volunteer, but they're outside. I would prefer, it's just my bias, that the community take. Take responsibility. And you know. Think about that as a natural resource. I mean, it it could be a place where native whatevers could grow. It could be a place where. Gardens. Do we have a community garden here in Kai Moki?
No, no.
I rest my case.
All right. Thank you very much, Laura. Appreciate it. Okay. So our next agenda item is community updates. I'm a key business and professional association as Calvin Ara on the line. Do not believe so. Okay, so we'll move on to our monthly report from the Hawaii bicycling movie.
Mister McCutcheon. I'm glad I can just stand up if everyone wants to stand up. Jumping around a little bit too, that's. That's fine. I think I'll stand here, but good evening, everyone. Glad to be here. We've been talking micro mobility. Small means of transportation and a little bit of, just get my whole card in the. If I can, a little bit of mass transportation also. Tonight, we're going to look at alt, what I'm calling alt mobility. Sort of less popular, maybe less well-known ways of getting around where the law also might be a little bit more. Sketchy or undetailed. But as as always, first. Here's courtesy of Jason DeMarco. We have an advertisement for HPL. So let's get that next. All right, so some of the activities that HPL has going on. And one to notice on eleven twenty-five, November twenty-five. Right after Thanksgiving, we have Keep It Kai Moki. So come on down to Wailei and join us all. Keep it Kai Moki. I will be there. Bike valeting. I will park your bike and watch it with eagle eyes. All right, well, let's let's take a look at some of these new things on the road. Whoa, you might be aware already of the phenomenon of K cars, K E I, Japanese for light automobile. These K cars are really kind of cool and and cute and. Oh, my goodness, I'm pointing at the bottom right, something very unusual about that car for us, maybe in the United States. It is right-hand drive, right? So these are K cars, a new kind of like little mobility, twenty-five years old. At a minimum, imported from Japan. They, that way they can sort of bypass the emissions requirements and the crash requirements. But still, they are growing in popularity, very cute. If you're interested, just head on down Wailei Avenue. Yep. Boom, we got Sky Auto, next slide. And they got Tondo sedan vans, little micro trucks. And you can pick one up except for, next slide, that one, that one is sold, you can see that. But again, the, these aren't exactly a solution to the environmental destruction that's going on. It's still one car. One person going this maybe a few miles, but it's something kind of cute and fun. They still need full licensing, registration, driver's license, all that. So let's look at something else. Man. These things look like auto cycle. Man, these things look like autocycles or motorcycles or mopeds, don't they? But these are true assistive mobility. Uh, looking, uh, say this, this Baja on the left, um, top speed, not fifty miles an hour, about fourteen miles an hour. Yeah, three thousand, four thousand dollars, about a thirty-one mile range. On the top right, the E Wheels E ten there, about three thousand dollars, fifteen miles per hour. And bottom right, the Pursuit five thousand dollars, top speed about nine miles per hour. But, uh, check out these wheels, look at the bottom right, look at those, those things are all terrain. They're on the sidewalk. They're on the bike lanes, they're crossing streets. They're not going fifty miles an hour, they're not motorcycles, they're assistive technology. But we need to be aware of them, we need to be heads up, uh, whether we're on the road or on the sidewalks. So just be aware, these things are looking slick, getting a little bit faster and can be anywhere at any time. All right, moving on. Here we have the Evolve Skateboard, two thousand dollars, out of the box, twenty-six miles per hour. Wow, twenty-six miles per hour, uh, twenty-four mile range. I've been watching the speed record right now on the electric, the electric skateboard, it's around sixty miles an hour. Sixty miles an hour. So these guys, again, they're fast, they're all terrain, they could be anywhere, anytime. Uh, be heads up, they're getting faster, they are quite popular. Be heads up for the electric skateboards. What else is new? Here we have a very cute thing called the Jack Rabbit. And if you look closely, I'm just going to step up to the board. This is not a bicycle. This is not a motorcycle, it's not a moped, it's not defined, it has no pedals. In fact, it doesn't even have a chain. It's an electric hub-driven, let's just call it a bike, because the word bike is sort of a non-legal term that we can use. Uh, it's got two wheels, but it doesn't have pedals, so it's not a bicycle by Hawaii law. But top speed about twenty miles an hour, about twenty mile range. This is super popular with elementary school kids. College kids and those last mile commuters, maybe going between the train station and their car or a bus stop in their car, just, you know, just sort of those quick trips you could just jump on. So new, exciting, something interesting, something again, kind of on the edge of the law, I guess. But again, you'll see them everywhere. Anywhere. Finally, boom. All right, this, I worked in high school, this is it, middle school, high school, this is Surrans, Tellaria's, Coopards, Cakes, E-Rides. Once again, this is not a motorcycle, it's not a moped, this is a bike, a bike, it's a bike, it's a bike. Obviously off-road, uh, doesn't need a license, doesn't need registration, there's just no rules about it. About four thousand five hundred dollars each, that's why they're being stolen all over the country, um, including in Hawaii. Top speed out of the box, at least forty-five miles an hour, easily upgradable to sixty miles an hour. I was eating lunch just on Wailei, had about five guys going by. Each on either Tellaria or Surrana or one of these guys. Yeah, again, easily doing thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour. So, um, uh, just to show you something about proof, I guess, here's one parked at the Civil Beat, uh, Civil Beat Center just a week ago. And obviously had to probably go on the road, not fully off-road. So, uh, again, my message for you tonight, there are lots of new speedy, wonderful, exciting devices that could be on your sidewalks, they could be crossing your roads, they could be in your bike lane, they could be in your lane going as fast as you. Please be heads up and remember, no matter who's out there and what they're doing, we all have that same basic. That is basically in our law, that we have the rights to be on the road and that sidewalk, but we have the duties to do what's right. So again, everyone, please be careful and be aware of everyone on the road. Aloha.
All right, thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you.
Questions? Hang on, hang on, any questions for the board? Any questions? Okay, if not, okay, go ahead.
You're lucky, Eric, you're healthy, so are you moving all around? I can't do that. Me, daddy, yeah? So, you know, like I said, you're healthy.
Well, I ride, I, I ride eighteen miles a day pedal bike, but I'm looking to lecture it. But I gotta stick to, stick to pedals.
Problem with that is, you know, all that movement, you might weigh out to your knee or your hip.
Don't say that.
She's limited to all this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we got a question from Kelsey, Kelsey, go ahead.
Um, this is actually not for Eric, but maybe after Eric.
Question after Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
For the next presenter.
For the next person? Sorry, Kelsey, we, we just didn't understand, you have a question for the next?
I have a question for, I guess, you chair, um, for after Eric, but this is my question for Eric.
Oh, a question for you.
Oh, question for me, okay, go ahead. Oh, okay, wait, hang on, any other question for Eric? Okay, go ahead.
Again, this is more of a comment, but every time I hear your presentations, like, oh, you know, technology is it's innovating so quickly and, you know, I have to consider how we're going to change our laws to be able to accommodate and regulate all this, so, uh, I always appreciate your thorough presentations and I'll do my best to regulate whatever it was.
And and that is an upcoming presentation, we're, we're building to, yes, how to, with law and economics, we can keep ourselves all safer. But for now, head on a swivel, watch out for everybody, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Okay, Kelsey, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, that was confusing. Um, thanks, Eric, for the presentation, but, um, sorry, I noticed the Queen Theater update wasn't included in the agenda and we do have Adori here, so I was wondering if we could take, um, some moments to get an update on the Queen Theater.
Okay, um, let's see, I know Adori. She's available to answer any questions, Adori, are you on?
She's on.
Yes, hey, I'm here, hang on. Hi, aloha, everyone, Adori Yu, here for the Queen Theater.
Hi, Adori.
Hi.
I guess Kelsey's question is, is if there's any updates to this point?
Right, yeah, so, um, you know, uh, I guess, so as some of you may already know, I, you know, I had to move back home a couple of years ago because both my parents were having some serious health issues. The timing worked out though, because I was able to, you know, address the safety concerns of illicit activity and then make sure all unauthorized occupants, uh, were removed. And more recently, I also, um, I also addressed safety concerns, raised regarding the Marquee. And then before that, actually, uh, you know, we, we also completely cleared it out, we listed it. Uh, we were looking to ground lease it out for a, you know, forty-plus year term. There was, you know, a good amount of interest, um, but ultimately our, our discussions did not lead to the right long-term lessie to trade, to take on the project, um, you know, it is a considerable project. Um, so now the, the plan is to develop the property by taking advantage of historic rehabilitation, um, tax credits. Hopefully at, uh, state and national levels. We will also be relaunching marketing the property once we, uh, you know, determine that basically the, the condition we are going to be able to deliver it in. And then just looking for, and then at that point, we would just be looking for normal, like, you know, three to five year lease, um, lessies. And in the meantime, um, you know, uh, the Queen is secure and safe. I'm, and I'm attending the neighborhood board meetings every month to address any immediate safety concerns. So, yeah, I guess, um, you know, I want to thank you all for your patience. As you know, rehabbing the Queen is, is a great project, but we are, we are working on it nearly every day. So, I mean, that is what we are pivoting to now, if that answers your question.
All right. Okay, thanks very much, Becky, question?
Hi, yes, um, thanks for coming, Adori. I, I think you were around when we were passing a resolution, maybe two years ago. And was it Tricia Watson was a member of the board, is that right? She, we had a friendly spirited discussion about how like the historic preservation piece would work. And I know it's complicated. And she just sort of indicated there's a lot of frustrations involved in going that route. So I'm just curious in, in your planning, like, how, how far are you into it? Have you come across some of these sort of warnings? And, um, you know, do you have a timeline for that rehab?
So basically, uh, yeah, well, it's actually, you know, thank you for bringing that up, Becky, because that actually is what we're trying to do our due diligence on at the moment. Um, and this is what I actually, um, I had explained to, um, Chair King, you know, regarding, um, the, the monthly updates, just because everything is, um, while we're doing our due diligence, um, it really is, um, hard for me to continuously update you guys on the record every month, because as we learn more, you know, the plan, the plan does change as it does with all big projects. So, um, that, that is what we're doing right now, I think at the, um, based on, um, our discussion so far and my research, it's, um, seems like there are going to be challenges both at the state and national level. But there are workarounds for it, um, as I learn more, so, uh, we are working on that right now.
Okay, so you're not in negotiations or in contract with anybody to help with that? That.
Um, well, you know, actually, the application, our application is ready, um, to place it on the state register. I was able to get a lot of guidance from Shifty, um, they're, you know, a really great resource. And, um, the only reason we have not submitted it yet is because we are, there was, you know, to be honest, there was a the misunderstanding regarding the projected costs for the scope of work that we were looking to do. So that was, uh, you know, the main reason why, so we're trying to firm all those numbers up right now.
Okay, and then like maybe two or three months ago, there was a woman that was speaking about creating kind of a community theater sort of thing, is, is that someone that you're continuing to?
Oh, right, you know, I know exactly who you're talking about, that was Elizabeth Pearson. Um, you know, I did have the pleasure of meeting with her, um, after, it was actually, uh, right after that last neighborhood board meeting. You know, we were able to do a walk through the theater together and, um, you know, I'm afraid I'm actually still waiting on a more fleshed out proposal from her. You know, specifically, you know, what's, uh, what we would need to know is how she would secure financing for a project like that, um, for the property.
Okay, and then I imagine like safety would probably be sort of a a necessary matter to determine before you figure out when you'll open and whatnot and what you might need to do to like, I don't know, maybe Jason knows, like, what, what do you need to do to figure out the, the safety of the facility before you engage in planning?
I'm sorry, what do you mean exactly by safety?
If, if like, if say that beams are falling apart, it's, it's not a safe place to, um, you know, have events at, what, you know, whatever, a possible vendor, whoever it is. If, if they're like, well, it, it's not fit for more than ten people or something like that. Like, if, if I were someone who wanted to buy or, or maybe lease it, you know, I'd want to know, like, when can I open this space for events? And if it's not safe enough to open, like, what's needed to be done? How much is it going to cost and how long is it going to take? So if I were looking into engaging in this business endeavor, I'd want to know that, like, what sort of repairs will I be responsible for? To make the business projections and just determine whether or not I want to go into this. So I imagine that, that threshold question, I imagine that being a threshold question is the safety of the facility. So where are we in that determination?
Sorry to interrupt, we're, we're getting a little bit past, you know, the community input and update portions, which we kind of went back here.
Gotcha, okay, sorry, you got me, you got me on this issue, so I'm going to shut up.
And I appreciate the passion and everything, but I, I'm going to ask that you hold that thought and I'm going to ask that, you know, Adori, join us.
Yeah, I can actually, I'll contact you directly if that's okay.
And, and, you know.
Actually, what's better is if you can just report back to the neighborhood board, because I won't be able to work on it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so Adori, if you don't mind, um, you know, maybe, maybe we can just touch bases and if you don't mind, just coming back in the new year sometime, you know, if, if, if you don't mind, and I, I realize that, you know.
Of course.
But maybe an update to start the new year so that we could have it on the agenda and, you know, have an item and, you know, we can, we can actually have, you know, further discussion on that.
Okay, yeah, I don't mind that at all, um, yeah, like I said, I, that's why I'm attending these, these, uh, board meetings still, um, on a monthly basis so I can address, um, exactly these kinds of, uh, inquiries.
Okay, great, thanks, Adori, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you all for your time.
All right, thanks. Okay, so next agenda item is Coffee Line and Community College, and my understanding is that Carol could not join us this evening. So we're going to move on to elected officials, uh, Mayor Rick Blangiotti's representative, Mark Wong, Mark, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I'll try, I'll try to make this fast, uh, first, I'm going to, um, respond to, uh, some of the questions that came up from the previous meetings. This may be a repeat, but there was a question about the, the, uh, traffic signal, the new traffic signal being installed outside Kamaki Gateway Plaza. And I thought I had responded on this before, but it's in the, this month's response. Uh, this is not a city-funded installation, it's being done by the contractor Nordic PCL. So, um, I don't really have a date for that, uh, the city is not doing that project. But I do have an answer to a longstanding question from Paul Ho, it's about the EV charger in the parking lot. And, uh, DTS has responded that the parking stalls program, I'm sorry, the charging is programmed to be installed in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I did personally speak to, uh, some cabinet members and apparently the, what's been kicked around now is who's going to maintain it once it goes in. But it, it is supposedly going to be going in, in the current fiscal years. The department that's in charge of that right now, it's actually an office, is the mayor's office on climate change sustainability and resiliency. So if you want to call them directly, they're at seven six eight two two seven three. But the, uh, scheduled timeframe is, is before the end of the fiscal year. I'll, I'll give you information as it comes along. Uh, the next one is a question from Lori Amada about, uh, studies for Sixteenth and Wailei Avenue. And DTS responded that, um, And D T S responded that, um, although there is an existing signal, uh, a modification for a protected left turn signal was approved and design funds for the modification included in fiscal year 2024 funding. Design approvals are estimated to take two years. Now, I wanted to take this time just to help you guys understand where you can find information about how you can get projects like speed tables done, how long they'll take, what's involved. And I have a couple of examples here. I can share them. The first one is for, um, this, oh, can you see this with this yellow stripe here? This is in Kailua, it's Almoi Road. This is a 1600 foot long stretch of road where they had speeding problems. And, um, a study was done by S S F M to put in speed tables and other improvements like shrubs and things to to slow things down. So to give you an idea, the design is $85,000. And construction is $845,000 for a total of $930,000 for that relatively small stretch of it's this, this is Almoi and it kind of bends over here and then there are a couple of offshoot roads. But a lot of the same issues and, you know, these pictures look like they could almost be in any neighborhood, but these, these are time consuming and expensive, uh, projects. I wanted to, uh, share another one with you. So this is also in Kailua. And, uh, this is one intersection at Kalahail Avenue and Kailua Road. And to talk about race crosswalks, which I guess we call speed tables, shared use paths, colored raised stamped concrete, roundabout rain gardens and signage. Now, this is on the D T S website, Department of Transportation Services. So the project is, uh, about two years done by D T S with the the same engineer that you saw for the other Kailua thing. Here's the contract, another company to manage it. And the project cost is $8 million. So, um, I know it seems like these things should just cost five, 10, $15,000. But, uh, they they can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, if if not millions of dollars. And I think one thing that I've I've tried to tell this board over many years is that we often ask for, say, uh, a crosswalk to be put in or a crosswalk to be moved or something to change. And then they have to go to federally mandated studies, which sometimes uh, end up mandating projects which are very time consuming or expensive, or actually doing the opposite of what the community wants because of of these, what they call warrants, you know, does it, does it warrant putting this in? So that's, those are federally mandated things. So I'm not trying to, uh, express an opinion one way or another. But if you do go to D T S's website, you can learn about the process and how this has worked in other parts of the island of our own island. So it's kind of relevant to the types of things that we're trying to do here in Kamaki. Okay, um, there was a question about the parking meters and what's going to happen with the with the old parking meters. So, um, four departments did respond. Uh, the primary one is D T S, Department of Transportation Services. They are going to keep the parking meter bases and posts and replacing the old meters with new domes. So I know there was a question about what's going to happen with the old equipment that they're going to throw out, and they didn't respond to that, but I will continue to try to find out. Facility Maintenance said they are, they don't have anything to do with this project. And, uh, D D C said that they are not also involved. So it's basically D T S. And then the last item was, uh, about the maintenance of, uh, brush and and, um, potential fuels on city properties, particularly parks. So I know there was a discussion here tonight, but D P R responded that that they have completed an assessment and city parks, uh, I guess it should be assessment for city parks across the island and is currently working with H F D to address overgrown areas. So, um, I know it's not, it's, it's not a closed issue, but it does sound like they've already done that assessment. And I know that they did mention something about that at cabinet meeting. So that concludes my, uh, report, but I will entertain new questions. I did, uh, write down the the questions from Lucas about the speeding on 16th Avenue. So I'll try to get some answers on that as well.
Good. Uh, any questions from the board first? Present for online? Becky, go ahead.
Hi, Mark. Thanks. Thanks for that. Um, I'm in the process of finding a picture of the old meters and what they've done, so I'll put that in a chat in a moment. But I I wanted, there's something else that I wanted to ask to know if you're aware of. I I just happened to come across this thing called a fitness court. And I think H M S A is involved in trying to find some, um, parks across the state. And that would be city, since it's a park here, uh, to install these little sort of fitness courts. And so I was just wondering if City and County Honolulu has been, um, aware of this. I just put it in the chat. There's a link. And I just thought that the corner, 10th Avenue and the park and Central Pacific and Tamoras and Boston's Pizza, there's the one covered area. You know, it's nice to have some coverage there, but I I don't know many people who actually like to hang out there. Would that place be a, uh, possible candidate for one of these fitness courts? And there's grants to do it. So they're looking for host sites to put it down there. So I'm just curious if the city has explored this. And I'm also just curious what the public thinks, like, would this work in our neighborhood? So the link is in the chat I just put in there.
So I did make note of that link. I I can't comment about that particular location, but the city has actually, um, worked with the community to, um, put in different things like dog parks, exercise facilities, places for kids, and probably one of the most, uh, I don't know, use the term notorious was the one, uh, near Alawana. If you can remember, they wanted, uh, they wanted, uh, the the private sector wanted to fund some, uh, playground equipment for kids with disabilities and and, um, and the city was for that. But, um, portions of the community were against it, so that that didn't happen. But, um, I'm, I do know that D P R is open, open to working with the community on these things.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just thought our park here, Kamaki Community, it's it's kind of got a Sesame Street vibe. It, I I think it would work here. So I'm just curious, you know, if 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 the neighborhood board were to maybe pass a reso, maybe we can get funding to get this installed. So it's just a thought.
I I would start by, uh, contacting D P R.
Okay.
Name of the prod, the 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 program they have there, but there is a an established way for the community to work with D P R to do all kinds of projects within the parks.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Um, oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot, Eric, uh, emailed me a question about the traffic signals coming down off Sierra. So, um, I'm going to take that forward, but I'm going to reiterate, I I I took this myself. But, uh, if you put together a a map or a picture or something showing exactly what you're talking about, it will help. So Eric, I think there are two lights here. I I'm not sure which one you meant. But and when I did a live, uh, traffic view, I did notice that this was red here. So I'm going to assume that you mean between Wailei and Harding. But if if not, correct me, and a map with details always helps. Because as you know, D T S is going to come back and say, you didn't say what side of the street. Or, you know, you have to give me a specific address or a specific light. So the more detail you can give, the better. And I just took the liberty to to snap this map to provide, um, some additional detail. But, you know, I I'd kind of like to hear from you exactly where you're talking about for adjusting the lights, because there are two there. Hey, thanks.
Lucas, you have your hand, huh?
Yeah, um, hey, Mark, thank you. I was just going to ask, do you know where I can find the that $120,000 cost for speed table or or cost for comparable speed table installed on Oahu?
And also, Yeah, actually, I I just, I just Googled. And, um, and I'm sorry, I said, I said H dot, it was, it was D O T. D O T, yeah.
Depending on what other traffic improvements they're making at the same time.
So if you go to, um, if you go to the city website and go to the D T S Department of Transportation, um, page, that's where I found some of these links, like this project, um, Kalahail and Kailua, it's got its own website. There's a whole website just for that project. Kalapavaiproject.com. I think that was that $8 million project.
Okay, great. I'll I'll dig into it. And then, uh, I guess, do you know where I would want to find the amount of speed tables installed? H dot or D T S is installed to date, or is that the same, just kind of Googling?
Yeah, you you got to kind of Google. And what they've done is they packaged them into those different projects. Like I found one on Maui where they're going to do, I think it was 16, 16 speed tables for 300,000 or something like that, $500,000. And then they'll, they, uh, these show actual maps. And sometimes it's just a list of an intersection, but there's no single spot where you can go and look at a map of where all these speed tables are.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, last question. Uh, what's good?
Hey, Mark, last month, October, I asked you if you can get hold of the transportation person, ask them to come over to the neighborhood board meeting.
Yes, so, um, I had, I had several lengthy, uh, discussions about this. And what everyone said was that that you've been asking this for years and that they've been saying no for, it's, I think, about 10 years. So they're, they don't, they're not going to spend any more time. The answer is no, the bus will not fit on that street and
The problem is, they came over and they can look at it and see how much money you're going to spend to make it where you can get it to come on that street. It's something like, uh, I was looking at, uh, last month, no, this month, November, agenda thing. And, uh, eight and well line, they're talking about, uh, getting some money to, uh, to put that some kind of shield on the traffic light. So they're going to spend money there. Why can't they spend money on, uh, my project?
It's just that the bus will not fit on your street.
Well, that's why I wanted to come over and see what
Yeah, they have been, they've been there. They've been there. They, D T S actually,
Sorry to interrupt you, Mark. Sorry to interrupt. So, Edward, I'm sorry. As Mark has indicated, the city has already considered this. I'm not, I'm going to stop you right there.
They should consider it again.
Okay, well, they've they've looked at it for about a decade at this point. So that's what, that's what Mr. Wong is indicating.
Right. I want them to come over so that when you can, I see where, uh, where you can cut the street.
Yeah, and so they've they've looked at that. So I'm 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 going to stop you there. Okay?
Every time you got a new administration, new people.
They've they've looked at it. Okay. All right. So thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. All right, so we're going to move on, um, to House Member Tommy Waters' office. Adam, welcome.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Board. My name is Adam Do, representing Chair Tommy Waters. I do have a lot, um, to say, so I'll try to be quick. For the 18th and Po'oua running a red light, uh, I'll submit a rider requesting officers to make checks. Um, and also request, I know this board loves to see results. So I'll ask, uh, H P D to, uh, still how many citations were issued? Believe you are resetting in December. So, yeah, I should be able to get that. H P D is very responsive, get those numbers, um, by January.
Maybe it helps let them report it that when they come, they come every time, let them report then versus a special.
Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, for the graffiti under the overpass, um, that is state. We, I'll submit, or I'll contact, uh, D L T, um, for that removal. However, if someone does want to call themselves, that number is eight three one six seven one four. But you can also always contact, um, our office. There's actually seven numbers to call for graffiti runners at a park, a bus stop, you know? So I don't expect you guys to, uh, know all of that. So we're happy to submit it. Um, there was talk about the rainbow crosswalk. I want you to let you know, we have tried for that in the past. This was particularly in the Waikiki area. Unfortunately, the U S Department of Transportation, it's against their guidelines. And so, uh, the city could potentially lose their funding and their grants from, um, the federal government. So fortunately, we can't see that at this time. Lucas, if you're still on, uh, I have a draft resolution that we can share with you. I'll give you an email tomorrow.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Yep. Uh, there's also a mention of the resolution that I was just heard, I believe, yesterday. That was Resolution 23 dash two seven one urging the Hawaii State Legislature, um, to eliminate the requirement to conduct an engineering study for a reduction of the max speed limit. So, yeah, right now, just to, we wanted to lower a speed limit from 25 miles per hour to 15. Do this long study, take up to nine months. And, yeah, it's, but the D L T is, they support this. Um, we do have, um, support from the state. I believe Senator Chris Lee is, um, chairs that, uh, committee. Um, for the Firewise, this is allowed. Yes, um, the Hawaii County Neighborhood Board was presented, um, a presentation by Firewise Hawaii. That's something this board is interested in. I can, I'm sorry you weren't able to connect. They are very busy. But I can, I can talk to you after or tomorrow. Um, we can get you connected with them. Uh, let's see, what else? Oh, this board's also very interested with, uh, D P P and their backlog. So the planning, uh, the Department of Planning and Permitting, D P P, did present, um, to the Planning and Economy Committee on the building permit backlog. The residential permit duration has been reduced from 330 days to 181 days during the last year. D P P Director Apuna said she is working hard with her department to bring these numbers down to even more. The department has hired 76 new employees and has lost 41 staff members due to retirement and other separation, resulting in a net gain of 35 personnel. D P P created 15 plan examining, examining engineer positions. And they believe that hiring these professionally licensed workers will reduce the building permit backlog. This presentation was very interesting. Uh, if you'd like to, uh, look at the slideshow of this presentation, you can find it on, uh, the city council website. If you, you can find, uh, Chair Waters newsletter on there. And then, let's see, oh, there was a question, uh, Becky for the H M S A Fitness Court. Uh, I was hoping to share this exciting news about it, uh, today. Hopefully, there is one coming to this community, um, very close to, um, the part that you, uh, said, it's not that part. Uh, there is a little bit of a holdup. It's actually with the state, not the city. It's going to be on state land. Um, but hopefully we can make that announcement, uh, in January. If you did want to check it out, I don't know which link that you put in the chat, but nationalfitnesscampaign.com. So it's an outdoor fitness court where you use your own, uh, body weight. It will, there will also, there'll be space to build Tai Chi, yoga, those types of classes as well.
So flip under.
Yep. And then, very quickly, my last is, oh, no. My left is at my desk. Ask it. I'll I'll send the last one, uh, up there with you.
All right, thank you.
With that, um, I'm happy to take back any questions to Chair Wang.
Okay, questions for the board? Go ahead, James.
Okay, I have more like two concerns, really. Up the past couple nights, there have been a really loud explosion, sometime sometime between eleven and twelve at night. Huge explosion at Kapahulu on the park. Uh, so of course, it's probably fireworks. Because that that park is notorious for, at night, it's dark, there's no, no lighting, so they'll go on there, they'll light up the fireworks, but these fireworks. Whatever they're detonating is, it shakes the properties, which could be pretty dangerous and like me, I'm a combat veteran and that's a nice. Those are the only times in recent, it should be right, leaped out of bed and and was ready to defend something. But so I was, I wanted to bring it up to HPD, but I figured your office might be more uh more able to relay a message, maybe if they could increase police presence and kind of keep an eye out for, you know, individuals walking in towards or around the park to deter them.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you for your service. Um, yeah, I I think we're all familiar with those loud, it's not even fires, just a loud bangs. Um, unfortunately, an officer has to observe it in order to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, if if they could just have a presence kind of heavier. It seems like it's going on between eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve, okay.
It might deter it, I mean, it might deter until one in the morning, who knows?
No, most definitely, especially as we come up to the holidays, have an increase of them.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll I'll make that a plus.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that's. Oh, actually, sorry. I don't know if you can speak on this, but question about the prosecutor's office. Seems like criminals are not being prosecuted, and a lot of people are angry, they, you know, crime is on the rise and whatnot, but so my question is, is the prosecutor's office understaffed? And if it's understaffed, is there a solution that anyone's working on to? Because they can only take so many cases, so if they're understaffed, or if they can't prosecute people.
Great question. Um, I do want to speak accurately on that, so I'll come back with you.
Okay, any other questions in the board, anybody online? Okay, if not, Elwood, go ahead.
Yeah, when you said eighteen Avenue sidewalk thing starts?
The complete streets?
Yeah, I believe that's something about the people who are and and parking, right? So sidewalk on both side?
Uh, let me check on that. If it's part of the property that I'm thinking about, uh, it's still a couple of years.
A few years. And both side sidewalk and one, one side being parking and the other side uh, the traffic moves. Uh, it's something like, oh, you know, a thirteen, with a car coming up, the car that going down, sort of move this way, let the car come up. Is that gonna be something like that?
This is for eighteen and Pohole?
Eighteen Avenue, you were mentioning last month, I'm gonna have a sidewalk on eighteen Avenue uh on both sides. Now, being that the street is small, and even uh, and with the sidewalk, people are gonna be popping on the street, not on the dirt anymore. So when you do that, where would the, is still gonna flow of traffic both direction? Uh, even with people both side parking on the street?
So I don't have those details off the top of my head, but I do have that presentation.
We did it last month, that's what you did.
Okay, so I can provide that.
Yeah, and also to you, we were on eighteen and oh um, looking toward the west, when you're on eighteen, when you come away at uh intersection is, got a big red light up there, flashing. But you gotta kind of go a little bit further out because it's right on the corner, there's like bushes. So you gotta, by the time you go a little bit wide, you almost.
Yes, so thanks for bringing that to our attention. We did um send that over to the Department of Planning and Permitting. And they're investigating that. If they find that is too high and needs to be cut back, um so.
So you already took care of it?
Correct, it's being addressed.
Okay.
So anyway, that uh so you're gonna look into how the traffic is gonna be on eighteen then, because you're gonna have cars passing from all side of the street.
Yep, uh, you can give me a call tomorrow. You have my number, I saw it the other day. And I can, I'll, I can mail it to you, or if you have email, I can give me an email.
No, I haven't called.
Okay.
Is it, is it only you there?
No.
Because some other guy is telling me about this, let's just say this, that, let us end it. He said he was in, talking about what I was talking about. Sorry, he was Hawaiian, you got a Hawaiian person.
So Elwood, maybe you can talk without him offline on that, so we gotta move on, okay? So thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so moving on to councilmember Calvin Seay's office.
Gee. Long, long walk.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am um Councilmember Seay's new legislative aide as of November first. So um, I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Seay is actually occupied tonight. He is at the Manoa Neighborhood Security Watch, um, and HPD District Seven. Um, he was commemorating um and um uh, recognizing the the founder of the Neighborhood Watch, so that's why he's not here tonight, so I apologize about that. So I have just a quick report. The report, um, so, let's see, so I'm just gonna give highlights of what um, what the monthly, um, what his monthly newsletter has. Um, so it's Bill sixty-one is relating to exceptional, exceptional trees. The bill updates the register of exceptional trees which are protected, not only for their beauty, but because they perform an important ecological function to prevent soil erosion, purify the air, and also it helps with preventing flooding. Um, if you wanna have um more locations of where these um trees are, you can just go check um, check out that bill at bill uh, which is Bill sixty-one. Uh, Bill fifty-six is CPACE program, uh, which stands for Commercial Property Assessment Clean Energy. It's a financing program for clean energy improvements, which include necessary upgrades in handling of sewage cesspools, deceptic systems, aerobic um aerobic treatment units for connections to sewer systems. To name a few, the projects are approved by the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. Um, you can check out these bills at hno dot dots. Um, this particular November edition has the parking rules edition, so there's um, various of FYIs on how to park your car in your neighborhood, so please look at those. And I was very surprised at one of them, vehicles are not allowed to park within thirty feet of a stop sign. And then, I know that, pretty interesting stuff. So um, yeah, and then the other thing that um Councilmember Seay went to was last night, he went to go speak on um it was a special session, Neighborhood Board Meeting, which was in involving which was involving the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board, the Ma'kikiipi Neighborhood Board, and also Chinatown regarding gambling, illegal gambling locations. So um, he was one of the speakers with also HPD and um Councilmember Dos Santos. And it's one of those things where if you, if you guys know of any illegal gambling activities, please contact his office and also contact HPD, they're trying to make sure that, they're trying to strengthen um some, or give HPD more enforcement in regard to those locations. Um, other than that, we did not have any concerns last month, so does anybody else have any question?
All right, questions, Councilmember Seay's office.
You're good?
All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aloha.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You have one?
Hello, I'm sorry, you did have a question. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, uh, this is Patrick Watson, and thank you for your presentation. And I did attend the meeting last night that you had discussed regarding the special meeting regarding game rooms. So, um, and actually, I had my hand up for Adam too, so if he's still around, maybe he can answer the question too. But, but regarding uh Councilmember Seay, I just wanted to mahalo him for being there and uh uh showing the support for those two bills that they were talking about, yeah? Um, so that was Bill fifty-seven and Bill fifty-eight, right? So one of them was nuisance abatement, and one was to provide uh the HPD with authority to act as a agent of the DPP, so they can go in and uh, when they bust a game room, they can find suspicious, you know, like structures and say, hey, that's not legal. So um, I know that they were looking for some support, and they also mentioned the fact that they um had finished their sessions for this year, but they're gonna look into the spring of twenty-twenty-four to try to get these bills passed. Um, but I just wanted to make that uh uh mahalo to uh Councilmember Seay for being there and, you know, taking that extra um interest in what's going on. So my question though was, uh, are there any concerns about game rooms in the Kaimeke area at present? Do we know of any, you know, activity or anything like that, that, um? Because they mentioned something about that one shooting in Kapahulu. Um, recently, the, there was like a laundromat that was a front for a game room. So he kind of alluded to the fact that that was an area, but um if there's any others that we might be able to take uh pay more attention to, because the, the uh recommendation from HPD was, as a community member, we need to do more to alert them to any suspicious activity. As uh my question to Major Lambert last night was, how long does it take to, you know, if we notify HPD, how long does it take for action to be, you know, actually seen by the community? And he goes, well, it varies radically from two weeks to months. So um, because I know there's concern about like retaliation, you know, like if you blow the whistle on somebody and they find out it was you, you know, you can be held accountable, you know, so, anyway, uh, that was sort of my question, do we have to be concerned about any game rooms in the area?
Um, as of right now, I can take that question back to Councilmember Seay's office. Um, we don't have anything at the moment, but you never know, I mean, it is illegal, so maybe that's something that we have to research a little bit more, um, and we can get back to you in January.
Okay, yeah, because he, he pulled on a map that showed different areas downtown the Kakaoko area, but I'm wondering if he has similar information for Kaimeke.
Sure, I'll get back to you in January. Oh, thank you.
Mahalos, and if, you know, again, a chair, if I can ask Adam one or two questions after this, could you miss my hand? Mahalos.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, Becky, Becky, you gotta, you had your hands on.
Hi, yeah, sorry, I, I hope I didn't miss mention of it, but we did have a game room problem um on Wai'li. Uh, and I almost feel like we had a rezo on it. I wanna say in like twenty-seventeen, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. Um, and it was in the Franklin Building, because I remember I, I sent my daughter there for like a sleepover with the, the Movement Center, and all of her dance friends, like, spent the night overnight in that building, and then I later learned that they had game rooms and violence and arms and stuff in there. So m- maybe you can look into whatever was happening, they were coming up on um Coco Head to that entrance, there's a door on the left on Coco Head, that was where they were coming in. I, I haven't heard about any issues there in the last couple of years, but I think it was like late twenty-seventeen that there might have been the game rooms there.
Okay, so I'm good, I'll take that back to uh Councilmember Seay's on. Mahalos.
Okay, and then else, if not, we gotta move on, so thanks, Judy, appreciate it. And then Patrick, I'm sorry I missed you, but we have to move on, someone just asked that you connect with Adam directly later on, all right?
Got it, mahalos.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to Governor Josh Green's representative, Nan Stevens here.
I don't see you around.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to Stanley Chang's office or his representative.
Um, hi, aloha Chang, board member. I'm Zoe, an intern from Senator Chang's office. We just released our November newsletter, and you can view it on his website here. And then additionally, you can also sign up for the housing newsletter using this link. So now we have two short announcements. Number one, the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, DCCA, is warning of deceptive solicitations being sent to registered Hawaii businesses. The fake solicitations give instructions on how to receive their quote official certificate of status from an entity called GA Business Compliance. These solicitations are not official documents issued to businesses by the state of Hawaii. If you own a business, you can monitor your business information at this link in the chat. If you aren't sure about the legitimate legitimacy of the business mail you receive, you can also contact the Business Registration Division of DCCA at eight oh eight five eight six two seven two seven, or B R E G at DCCA.hawaii.gov with any questions. And our second announcement is, our office is hiring for the twenty-twenty-four legislative season, and you can apply using this link. That's all, do you have any questions that I can take back to the office?
All right, any questions for Senator Chang's office? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, sorry, appreciate it. Okay, State Senator Lassihara or his representative. I believe he's online, so we'll move on to Representative Sayama.
Actually, be quick, uh, so uh our House Working Group, uh, I'm part of two, the Food, Water, all the Supplies Working Group had its public meeting at the beginning of the week. The Wildfire Prevention Working Group uh will be having its public hearing on Friday, ten AM at the Capitol, and I believe we're having online testimony as well. Uh, additionally, uh, I wanted to uh answer, I think, uh, Board Member Gardner's question uh from last month about the after-school program bill. Uh, I introduced HB sixteen ninety-nine in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, this was a request for about six million dollars in funding for after-school programs uh within the Reach Initiative, which includes A-plus Program. The bill didn't make it through the Finance Committee, because Chair Luke at the time folded that request into the budget uh to DHS, uh, of which six million appropriated five million was given to uh assist families uh for basically subsidizing families to pay for the after-school care programs. Uh, there was a similar bill this year, HB uh sixty-nine, which was introduced by Representative Matoyoshi for two point five million dollars. Unfortunately, that did not make it through either through the budget or through legislation, so I'm sure that it's gonna be a second try at that. Uh, for the upcoming legislative cycle, I'm looking at, as part of the working group, I'm looking to uh ways the state can assist uh the Voight Food Bank to procure uh more state, more facilities, uh, to expand the capacity to store their food, as it was evidenced during the Maui wildfires. They simply didn't have enough capacity, they need about triple to quadruple uh storage facilities. Uh, so we'll be assisting them in identifying locations and funding to secure those locations as well. Uh, personally, I'll be looking into condominium insurance issues, as well as homeowners' insurance issues through the legislation. Uh, but if you do have any uh ideas, please let my office know, and my office is also hiring for the legislative sessions. If you are interested, uh, please feel free to contact my office, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Representative, any questions for Representative Sayama, Becky?
Just real quick, I wanna make sure I got the numbers right, HB sixteen ninety-nine from twenty-twenty-two and HB sixty-nine from twenty-three?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Representative, appreciate it. All right, Representative Kobayashi.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Um, I have a few copies of my printed uh report, if anyone wants. Otherwise, uh, I wanna talk about little fire ants. This is a star advertiser of Monday, and it says, um, fire ants are spreading rapidly on Oahu, where there are now more than thirty active sites of little fire ants across over two hundred acres from Kahuku down the entire windward coastline to Hawaii Kai and Kahala. Um, that may be in error. Uh, I am, Department of Ag, Department of Agriculture, has told me they know of no uh infestations of fire ants in Hawaii Kai and Kahala. The problem is that they are not the main eradicator agency. Um, and I have a meeting on Monday with a person from the Invasive Species uh Invasive Species Council, and a phone call anticipated from Dillanara on the latest as to where these infestations are. Little fire ants are very, very terrible pests and could es- essentially render any outdoor activity near impossible or painful. Uh, so, um, we have infestations on the neighbor islands, particularly Big Island, that are so bad that the state has given up in eradicating and are only involved in controlling. So that entire island is infested, and uh the attempt to go back to zero seems to be impossible. Um, let's see, on the um big picture side, um, we have um good and bad news with regard to the budget. Uh, on November one, the bad news was that the State Council on Revenues decreased general fund revenue estimates by about half percent for both fiscal year twenty-three, which, uh, wait, uh. Yes, twenty-three and um twenty-four. Um, so that's uh perhaps in the range of um thirty to forty million dollars a year, which is not a big, big change. The good news is that uh as of last month, October, general fund revenues are up seven point six percent. Hmm, so, uh, we are anticipating that there will be um some uh hurt caused by the Maui wildfires, both in revenues and expenditures. Uh, this past week, the governor redirected approximately a hundred and seventy million dollars away from uh what the legislature appropriated for possible use on Maui issues, Maui fire issues, so.
All right, all right, thank you, Representative, any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. All right, uh, Congressman Ed Case or his representative? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none, announcements? Um, no announcements, Board Business, Reporter Planning and Voting Committee, Jason, do you have anything to report?
You hear me, Chair?
Yes, now we can hear you, yes. Hooray!
Uh, yes, I am pleased to announce the uh Planning and Permitting Committee is planning to meet next Thursday evening at five thirty PM in the room you now occupy at the Kaimeke Public Library. Uh, participation is also available online via Zoom, and the agenda and Zoom link for that meeting were issued as part of the overall board's agenda. So please refer to that for the topics uh to be discussed at the upcoming.
All right, thank you very much, thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I have this approval of the October twenty-twenty-three written summary for video record. Hope everybody's had a chance to take a peek at that. Are there any corrections or additions to the written summary of video record? We got line, okay, seeing none, we will, um, we will have those minutes adopted by the board. All right, uh, reports, members attendance at other meetings, anybody attend any other meetings? Okay, um, I did attend the uh meeting uh of chairs put on by the NCO, which is very helpful, so thank you for the NCO's office, bring that on. All right, the next meeting of this board will be in January, because the board is taking a recess in December. The meeting will be January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, six thirty PM, right here at the Kaimeke Public Library and on webex. With that, this meeting is adjourned, thanks very much.
Thank you.